We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call for order this meeting in Long Bay County Commission for October 14th, 2020, and we'll begin with consents and approval. Good morning, Renata.
Good morning. We have no exonerations for you today. Vouchers: General County Fund, $209,040.26; Magistrate Court, $259.20; 911, 1,001.2556; Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,027.22; Camp Muffley, $1,057.33; Assessor's Valuation, $4,024.39; Payroll, $1,602,384.54; Purchasing Card vouchers, General County Fund, $27,771.07; 911, $9,089.67; Chestnut Ridge Park, $399.84; Mason Dixon Park, $76.55; Assessor's Valuation, $753.99, for a voucher total of $1,857,731.62. Physician vacancies for boards and authorities: The Western Board of Zoning Appeals, Montague County Planning Commission, Mon County Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, Advanced Dilapidated Enforcement Agency, Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board, Region Six Planning and Development Council, Historic Landmarks Commission, and the Mountaineer Trail Network Authority. Fiduciary orders for October 14th, 2020.
Move to approve?
Second. Been properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Introductions of new employees and personnel changes. First, we have Jim Smith. Oh, I'm sorry, Sheriff. Sheriff, you want to go first?
I didn't know if there was anybody else.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have Sherry Snyder Innes.
Correct.
She'll be starting the 16th of October as a full-time bailiff with a starting salary of $2,493.04 per month.
Move to approve?
Second.
Been properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
And welcome.
Welcome.
Glad to have you. Next, we have Jim Smith.
No, it's only Jim Smith.
We have a full-time telecommunicator, Jeremiah Thurman. We don't have him here today with us. His starting date will be October 26th. It's $16.30 per hour.
Move to approve?
Second.
Been properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any other introductions of new employees or personnel changes? Hearing none, we will go to comments from the public. If you wish to speak, come forward. Identify yourself and your address, and you'll be given three minutes to speak. We're open to more comments from the public.
My name is Evan Hansen. I live at 341 Sanford Street, and I represent Montague County in the House of Delegates. And I wanted to say a couple of words about the proposed ordinance related to medical cannabis facilities in Mon County that's out for public comment now from the Board of Health. I would strongly urge the Board of Health to go ahead and approve those permits that are before them today. I feel like medical cannabis is an issue of compassion. Medical cannabis can only be purchased by those with serious medical conditions such as cancer, PTSD, chronic pain, and terminal illness. And unless the Board of Health moves very quickly, we're not going to have any medical cannabis dispensaries in Mon County. And that means people that need the relief that medical cannabis can provide will not be able to get it locally. In addition, it's an economic development issue. There are many businesses, entrepreneurs, that have invested money to come to Mon County with the expectation that their permits would be approved, and if those permits are not approved, they will have lost those investments. I further question whether it's even legal for a local Board of Health to issue a multi-page ordinance like we have before us today when the legislature has already set up a regulatory structure. The legislature acted in 2017. There's a vigorous debate. There's been debates since then that have modified the state code. And some of the things that are in here have already been discussed and answered by the legislature. One example of that is paragraph 29 that requires a healthcare professional to be on-site. That was already debated at state level, and the legislature decided to remove that requirement. The local Board of Health does not have the authority to re-insert it. And I would conclude by saying, as a delegate, I would pledge to work with the Board of Health or anybody who has concerns about the current code. As everybody in this room knows, it's very common for the legislature to pass a bill that needs to be cleaned up in the future or that needs to be modified because we learn more about how it's instituted in real life. So this could very well be the case with medical cannabis, but that would be the proper venue to make changes, not a local ordinance. So I'd urge the Board to approve those permits immediately and work with me and other legislators at the state level to make any required changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Evan.
Anyone else?
My name is Mark Nusselrod, Mark J. Nusselrod, 1444 Stewartstown Road in Morgantown. I am broker for Black Diamond Realty. Our brokerage represents property owners as well as cannabis firms that are looking to locate in Morgantown in Montague County. I appreciate the County Commission's support of medical cannabis industry. That support goes probably well beyond the zoning verification letters back in February. However, I think the Commission has an issue at its hands. Unfortunately, the Commission represents 105,000 or so residents. They're all constituents of the Commissioners. Those are stakeholders. They're property owners that have land rights. They're new businesses that are going to create taxes, existing businesses as well for jobs and investment. That's what's at stake, as well as what Mr. Hanson pointed out, healthcare options and medicines for 105,000 residents from two major medical institutions in our county. The County Commission appoints those BHO members and BOH members and funds the Health Department. And unfortunately, the Health Department, Board of Health, isn't elected by the constituents. The constituents are going to be looking at the Commissioners, but I think the public wants to give the support to the Commission to do whatever it can to get the applications approved. There's not protesters outside not wanting medical cannabis. In fact, there's, I don't know how many of the 105,000 residents, but I would urge to say that the majority of them versus five Board of Health members that are throwing up an obstacle. The timing is imminent, as you all know. The Office of Medical Cannabis at the state is currently reviewing applications. They have two teams. They brought in an extra team to review more than 100 applications. Montague County has roughly 21 dispensary applications pending. There are 33 other counties' Board of Health that have approved applications in total in their counties. Montague County is the last one with an approval decision, Board of Health is. It's expected that these operations are going to be operating in 2021, so we don't have time for a 30-day public comment period that the Board of Health wants to institute, and then a two- to five-day timeframe for a meeting. What if the regulation is revised? Is there a new comment period if it's voted down? But the Board of Health has basically threatened that they're not going to approve the applications and have medical cannabis. There's a strange dichotomy going on with the regulations that's proposed. It has basically amounts to zoning and does amount to zoning and land use regulations. The Board of Health was not given that authority under state code. In fact, state code delegates that authority to municipalities, which would include counties and cities. And those counties and cities, we've already had zoning discussions and so forth. And as far as Mr. Hawkins goes, I mean, it would declare certainly a conflict there with one of our representative properties and Mr. Hawkins' family's property. So if anything needs addressed to the other two Commissioners, that's applicable. But in my view, the Board of Health is usurping the power of the county and the cities that already have zoning. The zoning verification letters were issued back in February by Star City, Westover, Granville, Morgantown, the county. In fact, here's one of the zoning verification letters issued by the Planning Department of the Commission, the Planning Commission. Said address is not currently zoned at this time and therefore does not have any land use or zoning requirements. Well, when we look at the Board of Health regulation, it talks about being 1,000 feet away from parks and libraries. It talks about being 4,000 feet away from other cannabis facilities. It's citing things that are impractical. I mean, there's a reason that CVSs and Walgreens locate across the street from each other. They're commercial centers of commerce that are easily accessible by people. So by preventing where cannabis facilities can locate is preventing access instead of allowing access.
You have your three minutes.
My time up?
Your four minutes.
All right. Well, I'll conclude really quickly. Basically, I would urge the Commission to do whatever it can within its power to get the applications approved because I think it'll be an extreme injustice if they are not. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning. My name is Patrick Kyle. I live at 87 Kingwood Pike. I'm here to comment on the Green Bag Improvement Project again, specifically for you, Mr. Bloom, because you have come out publicly saying that you are for the project and made many comments about why you are for the project. I would just like you to correct some of your wording on part of the reason why the project is going through. You will not be able to get trucks stopped from going downtown by putting in roundabouts there. It's not because the trucks might have to wait three minutes at the light to get through it. It's because the trucks won't take the S-turn between the Giant Eagle and the Get Go gas station. It's too steep of a grade and too sharp of a turn. That's what's preventing trucks from getting through. The other reason, of course, is that it's a much shorter route for them to go through town, and we really have no say on whether they're allowed to do that because it's a state road and not our road. So I'd just like you to correct that reasoning that being the trucks going through is not an actual reason to be putting the roundabouts there. The truckers won't go because of that S-turn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Mark Nusselrod, the old Mark. 324 West Run Road, Morgantown, West Virginia. I'd like to submit two things for you all. Before my three-minute clock starts, I also want to acknowledge a conflict of interest that Mr. Hawkins, as Commissioner, has with myself and my son and Glenn Mark as it relates to this matter, so that we're on the record that there is no issue there whatsoever. I appreciate your time and the time that the Board of Health has spent on the cannabis license application. As perspective, the Governor signed the cannabis legislation on April 19th, 2017, and applications for dispensaries were due at the state on or before February 18th, 2020. Upon submission, the applicant had to have the location of the proposed dispensary under option and have received evidence the location was not in violation of state code and regulation from this Commission or a local municipality. It's very important to note, these applications and sites cannot now be changed at the state level. The Board of Health, for months, has been sitting on all of the dispensary applications and is now putting out regulation for public comment until the 1st of November. These proposed regulations after the fact conflict with the site criteria for all the applications before the state that cannot be changed or amended, all the while the state is moving forward in reviewing applications and will not wait for Montague County. The state has developed very comprehensive and detailed, comprehensive regulation for cannabis over three years ago, and I do not believe that we need additional regulations. I appreciate our Department of Health employees and the Board, including their thoughts and desires. What they have drafted, though, I believe exceeds their statutory authority and amounts to de facto zoning and conflicts with state law. My father died of pancreatic cancer. That's painful. His palliative care doctor seared in my mind, and I will never forget it, that if medical cannabis had been available, we would not have had to prescribe narcotics and opioids as soon, and his quality of life could have been better. I have in my possession an email from the WVU Palliative Care Department, a doctor from the Palliative Care Department urging the removal of Roblox and also urging potential, I also urge potential patients and doctors in our community to stand up to what's going on here. The problem is twofold. If the Board of Health does not act positively on all the applications as soon as every other county but one, as every other county but one has done, the 100 dispensaries in this state will be located in the surrounding counties and the rest of the state, and Montague County will get zero. That means all the folks with doctor's prescriptions from our state's major medical institutions, county hospital, cancer centers, and pain clinics will have to travel out of this county to get prescriptions filled. In addition, the county and cities will not get the benefit of the significant jobs, tax revenue, and the landlords will not have the benefit of new tenants when there are vacancies, many of which we're all dealing with as a result of COVID. The second problem from a property owner perspective is there are four major issues that need deleted in these regulations that are in conflict with state law and one minor item that needs to be added into regulation, which if dealt with would go a long way provided the applications are approved and sent onto the state immediately. Those changes are the deletion of public libraries, public parks, which is not in the state regulation, the deletion of the distance from the cannabis facilities from one another, the preferred structures of freestanding facilities. The one addition is cellular phones or cellular backup for the security systems. And number five, the healthcare professional requirement, which is in direct conflict and actually in state law, you are not allowed to have a doctor or a professional located in the same space. I ask and plead with you all as a County Commission to please take a stand and do as much as you possibly can, which I know you've already asserted and tried to do. I ask you to continue with that, and I plead with the Department of Health to move the applications immediately to the state and deliberate over the regulations after the applications have already been submitted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, my name is Carol Atkins. I have 141 Holbert Lane, Madesville. We are, my family develops a lot in Westover, commercial land development and city neon. And I hadn't really intended on speaking, but I do want to let you know that there are a lot of developers that are concerned about the cannabis issue. The Nusselroads have done thorough research, and I think that they really, really have hit all the high points. Right now, currently, if this would actually pass, which I don't even think that it would pass in time to get the, to get the facilities anyway, but the one that we've been working on for two years with the company will be gone. So I will lose a tenant that was going to more or less pay for the building as well as all the BNO that it's going to be losing to the city of Westover. So, you know, I live in Westover or have lived in Westover. All my businesses are there. I'm very particular about what I do, and we've worked with this company as far as making sure that we meet the regulations and meet what we need to to keep the community safe. So I just want to, I know that you are a separate board than the Health Department, but I would like anything that you all could do to help and support us. We would really appreciate it.
Thank you, Carol.
Anyone else caring to speak?
There's someone in the back.
Please come forward. You don't have to raise your hand. Sorry.
It's our deputy mayor.
That's right.
Hiding in the back.
So, of course, I'm Rachel Fuddy, and I live in Morgantown, West Virginia. And I am just coming generally as an individual, not as the deputy mayor, to note that as a general rule, I would overwhelmingly support the Health Department's suggested regulations. And I would do that as a person who is not at all opposed to medical marijuana or the use of medical marijuana, but as someone who has significant family ties to Colorado and what I have seen happen in individual communities there regarding the clustering of marijuana dispensaries, the overwhelming of, the overwhelming nature of the response that's required from individual health departments in responding to challenges that are presented by the availability of marijuana in any context due to the intense demand. And I would just like to note that I strongly believe that as important as medical marijuana is, that I think we need to be cautious as folks proceed to understand that there are consequences for the legalization of marijuana in other contexts when it's not in a medical dispensary that are not often discussed but are very intensely felt by the people in a community where that occurs. Having said that, I would like to note that the Health Department has been extraordinarily busy of late, and due to the COVID crisis, I think that the proposed regulations have been delayed in a way that is unnecessarily harmful to the potential dispensaries. And that due to the delay, which is not, I believe, the fault of the Health Department, but just one of many, many consequences that we're all facing as the result of COVID, I think it is not the right time to implement this set of regulations. What I would request is that the Health Department make a very open presentation about their justification for these specific rules. I understand the underlying justification for these rules, but I don't think those are well-understood. I don't think there's adequate time to publish or to receive public comment about these issues before, obviously, folks are going to see their leases expire and their licenses expire. I don't think we have time, and I think unfortunately that this regulatory effort, which I think is well-intentioned, is simply one of the, I guess, I guess, just one of the unfortunate results of a COVID crisis. And I would request that the Health Department have public comment and that it allow the folks who have their licenses and have done what is obviously due diligence to submit their licensing requests. I would ask that you all would move forward and encourage, you know, folks to move forward on those requests immediately and that this regulatory effort be brought forward again at another time with the permission for folks to be grandfathered in if they do not meet these requirements. I do not understand why anyone would want to put a marijuana dispensary, medical or not, within 1,000 feet of a park or a library. And as an individual who lives here and as someone who sees the incredible difficulties that we experience dealing with the level of drug abuse and addiction in our community, I'm very, very disheartened by the possibility that this may increase the side effects that we're experiencing of that. But I appreciate everyone's time, and thank you. That's all I have. Commissioner Hawkins, did you have a question or were you calling my time?
You were just saying one minute. Yeah.
I gave everybody, I gave everybody over their time.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming, Rachel.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishes to speak? Hearing none, we will conclude public comments. Okay? And we'll move on to grants. Colleen, do we have grants?
I have reimbursement requests today for the Governor's Highway Safety Program. The first one is distracted driving in the amount of $1,287.34. The next one is for impaired driving in the amount of $182.16. And the final one is for Safe Communities in the amount of $2,809.97.
Move to approve?
Second.
Been properly moved in second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sheriff Palmer, we have the presentation of the tax sale suspension list for 2019.
I do indeed. I'm presenting you the list of properties that will be suspended for the 2019 tax lien sale. Properties are being suspended for various reasons: bankruptcy, previously certified to the auditor, condemnation, interest in minerals only, and questionable deeds. And if you have any questions on that, Kelly can answer.
What date is the tax sale?
I have that.
Okay.
It is Monday, November the 2nd at 9:00 a.m., and we will be holding that at the Sheriff's Building in the upstairs overflow room. Dr. Smith with the Health Department has already been there and has measured the room and has assisted in the setup of the room and how he felt it would be safest for all. And I just did want to mention, Ben was here, but the last day to pay will be Friday, October 30th at 5:00 p.m. All payments must be in the office. Online collections shut down at 5:00 p.m. as well, so everything needs to be paid for by 5:00 p.m. on October 30th.
Does this require our approval?
It's just acceptance.
Move to accept a list as provided by the sheriff?
Second.
Property moved in second for acceptance. All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it. Next, we have correspondence, a letter from Mayor Herman Reed, Town of Star City, regarding pending medical cannabis facility applications.
Would you like me to read it?
I would. Thank you.
I think it's a short letter.
Yeah, it's a short one.
This is actually written to the Health Department, and then the Commission was copied on it. "Mr. Smith, this letter is in relation to the proposed ordinance for approval of cannabis or hemp-related businesses. The Town Council and I are extremely disappointed that the Mon County Health Department is taking overly drastic measures in regulating these businesses. West Virginia state code has placed sufficient restrictions on these businesses to govern and restrict their activity. Specifically, the provisions which prohibit these businesses being within 1,000 feet of parks, churches, daycares, and green space is overly restrictive. In addition, the requirement of having 25 spaces is excessive. The Town of Star City has no ordinances that restrict the ability of these types of businesses in our corporate limits and do not believe that any other restriction should be placed over and above what the state of West Virginia has imposed. In addition, we believe that you are deliberately blocking a business owner from creating a prospering business in our community as well as any revenue that is generated in taxes for the Town of Star City. We vehemently oppose your attempt to enact and enforce zoning laws in municipalities that can govern in their jurisdiction without imposition from your office." Herman Reed, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also have the first quarter levy report from Bow Park.
It's on file here if you want to look at it.
Okay. Is there any other correspondence?
No, sir.
Commissioners? Is there any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Hearing none, we will move to new business. And the first item on new business is actually a public hearing, so we will, this is to consider correction in second reading and public hearing on the request for a text amendment to the West Run Planning District zoning map. zoning map filed by Little Mar LLC to amend Text Article 1200.05A by striking containing no more than 16 dwelling units per acre from the text in accordance with Article 2200 of the zoning ordinance. So we will have the presentation of this by our planner first, and then after that, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this item will be allowed to speak.
Thank you. Andrew Gasprey, Director of Planning for Montague County. The request is consistent with a request that you had passed for R4 zoning in 2016. The context is that the ordinance as written already limits the number of bedrooms, and given the nature of new styles of building, et cetera, that is very common in providing housing options, that is very much in need and in fashion across the United States trying to address housing issues. It seemed an unnecessary restriction to also confine the dwelling units per acre when the limit of density, which was the, the cause at the origin of the zoning as it was prescribed, it seemed a little bit too much. So the request was presented to the planning commission. It was unanimously accepted. There was no opposition. And so we are presenting that to you in the case of R3 zoning as presented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this said text amendment? Seeing nobody coming forward, is there anybody who wishes to speak in opposition of this text amendment? I don't think then that requires a rebuttal, since there's no opposition, and we will close this public hearing on this particular amendment.
I move that we accept the text amendment as presented by the planning commission?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for acceptance. All in favor?
Aye.
It passes. Next, consideration of requisition number 46 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
The requisition, sir, is for $554,635.26. Those funds will be transferred to the State Auditor's Office, and they will make the payment on bonds.
And I will note that this is the, the regular debt service deposit less the $100,000 statutory lien and the tax amendments straight of fees which are removed from it. So I move that we approve the requisition 46 as presented?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Consideration of appointment to the Mason Dixon Historical Park Advisory Board.
Charles Kraft has been serving on the board for several years. His term actually expired at the end of June, and he would like to be reappointed.
Move that we approve reappointment of Charles Kraft to the Mason Dixon Historical Park Advisory Board?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
To consider for approval an engagement letter for Perry and Associates for the preparation of fiscal year 2020 financial statement for the Montague County Commission.
Move that we approve the engagement letter as presented?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
To consider the extension of the supplemental funding provided to the Visit Mountaineer Country Convention and Visitors Bureau.
I move that we continue the supplemental funding to the Visit Mountaineer CBB at the same level for the next three months.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there any other new business?
No, sir.
Hearing none, we'll move to reports from elected officials. I don't see anybody coming forward. Reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Okay, I have a couple. First, the Mountaineer Food Bank, along with The Pantry Plus More and The Black Bears, will be having a Saturday mobile food giveaway at, at our Montague County Ballpark Stadium at the parking lot across the street. And I truly want to thank everyone involved in that. The second, and I'm sure she doesn't want me to say anything, but every once in a while, you have an individual, Carol Atkins is that individual, who gives so much back to the community. And when she comes before the county commission to voice concerns and support, I listen. And what she has done for the community in Westover, for the nonprofits and donations, and when she comes forward, I think it's really important that she represents a large segment of the population. And I personally want to thank you for what you've done for the community and also what you said today. I do appreciate it. And as a children, I'd be very proud of her, as I am. Third, I believe Delegate Evan Hanson was spot on, and I believe I'd like to make this statement, or I will make this statement. I feel an obligation to express my views on the Board of Health's delay of the 21 dispensary applications. I do believe that the Board of Health wants to do the right thing, but in my opinion, is clearly misguided. As a county commissioner, I believe it is imperative to be fair and equitable to all the applicants who have applied, and the county commissioners, just like the Board of Health, are mandated to follow all state statutes. The Board of Health received 21 applicant names and their proposed locations, which is all that was provided by the state to the Board of Health. The only, again, again, the only criteria that the Board of Health was permitted to use for evaluation purposes concerning dispensary facilities under 64-112-6.2.8 was that they could not be within 1,000 feet of a private, public, or parochial school or a daycare center. That is all the law states. The rules and regulations being proposed by the Board of Health goes beyond the power and authority of the local county health department. The regulations that were initially proposed was written by one of the applicants, but when I asked who wrote the ordinance, I was given another response. This clearly does not set up a level playing field for all the applicants and gives the appearance of an unfair advantage to certain candidates. It's quite simple. Do the applicants meet the requirements of the state law to be considered as a dispensary? I am requesting that the Board of Health pass all 21 applications before the first week of November and let the State Office of Medical Cannabis make the mandatory and required decisions on permits. After they are selected, the county commissions and the Board of Health could then discuss what steps can be taken to implement a similar ordinance through the proper agencies and in compliance with the applicable statutory laws. Thank you.
Josh, Tom?
Since the last meeting, last Thursday, we had the Mon County Health Department Board of Health special meeting that I attended. I also had Red Team meeting that day and Development Authority meeting in that afternoon. Friday, we had staff reports. This week was a holiday weekend, so Monday was Columbus Day. Today, we have a regular day. We have election testing at the Election Center this afternoon. Tomorrow, I have a Mountain Park Board meeting. Friday, we have staff reports. And then in the afternoon, if I can make it, there's a congressional leadership event at the Extension Building. I have a conflict right now, but I'm going to try to see if I can make that. In general, I appreciate everybody that's come and talked today. Generally, we usually don't have these size crowds. It's usually a pretty quick meeting. But this is an important issue, and the commission takes it very seriously. The rub here is, as you heard at the beginning of this meeting, there's at least nine different commissions or boards. We don't, we have vacancies on. It's really hard to find individuals to serve. And I'm not the official representative of the commission to the Health Department, because we, I don't sit on that board because it's not statutorily required. And, but I'm, I am the commissioner that, that goes to all their meetings and self-described champion of, of the Health Department. And we all, we all know what's been going on in the last six, seven months in regards to COVID. That's not an excuse. What we have here is a kind of a culmination of a bunch of different events that are unfortunate. We had this COVID, and then the applications showed up sometime this spring. The state sent them up. And while the Health Department is running around with their hair on fire trying to deal with the COVID, they had the applications that they had to deal with. But there is a deadline. There is a deadline to get these things done. And I think we're all in agreement that the applicants that are before the Board of Health have to be, have to be addressed and dispensed with before that deadline comes. The rub is, how do we get there with the Health Department wanting to put these regulations in place before they'll approve those applications? They have a very small window, but I absolutely, I absolutely have made my, made my position known that these applications will be addressed one way or the other before the deadline. So we're trying to work with that. You know, we have legal opinion. Well, actually, we hired, on behalf of the Board of Health, we hired legal opinion to take a look at this, because when we first met with the Board of Health, we said, okay, how can we do this? And that was our charge to our legal counsel, is how can we do this? They came back to us, and there was a couple different ways that this could be handled, but the overriding opinion from them was this was out of the lane of the Health Department. The Health Department has their own counsel, which they hired, which give them conflicting advice. So here we have kind of a, a legal crossroads where their counsel's giving them advice that may be contrary to other counsel that we hired or on their, their behalf. So the, we're, we're trying, we as a commissioner trying to let this run its course. But again, I want to restate that the important, the important thing is here that we address these applications, that we don't let the deadline lapse and have these applications not be in the whole mix at the state level. So that's the rub. I mean, we are dealing with it daily, hourly. I mean, this is, this is something that we've worked very hard on, and we're in communication on, and we're going to work through this. Again, I appreciate everybody that's come in and talked about it. Mark, I especially appreciate, Mark Senior, I especially appreciate your story, because that puts, that puts a human aspect to this. This isn't about, it's not always about dollars and cents. It's about our citizens needing to have options for the citizens that need that. And I, I do think that the, while I know that the Board of Health is unanimous and, and that they feel that this is something that's needed, and they're trying to get out in front of, they're trying to get out in front of what Rachel described, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Fetti described, you know, when these things are instituted and located. So I don't fault them for taking their, their jobs very seriously. I think I have a very diverse Board of Health membership. Each one of them has a certain level of expertise, mainly in kind of the health, health fields and business field. So I, as the representative to the Health Department, I really am always going to err on the side of trying to let them make their decisions. Because we as a commission, if we, if we appoint people to commissions and then tell them what to do, then they become less effective, and they're really not, they're really not doing the job that we're asking them to do. Just like when you hire a legal counsel, you don't want them to tell you, tell you what you want to hear. You want to tell them to tell you the truth and what you can, what you can and cannot do. So, you know, we are, we are working on this. We are going to resolve it. These applications will be processed one way or the other. But I do really appreciate everybody coming in and talking about it, and hopefully we get this resolved and move forward. I do appreciate Evan, Evan's comments, because I've said all along where this really needs to be fixed at the state level. And to the, to the Health Department's credit, they were given a job to approve these applications, but the state provided no criteria for which them to address these, these entities. So it's, it's a flaw in the current statute, and I would really appreciate Evan taking his offer seriously and working with the Health Department with or without these ordinances to, to move forward and make changes to the state law if, the next session. So that's all I have. Oh, I do have one special congratulations. Very, very, very good friend of mine, Diane Lewis, was just named SBA, Small Business Administration, Small Business of the Year, Small Business Contracting Contractor of the Year, which is a big deal. And, you know, we had, we've had, the company I work for, Key Logic, has won that same award a couple of years ago. Now you have AFM, Action Facilities Maintenance, which is Diane's company that has won it. You know, there's a lot of these small businesses that really make up the fabric of our whole community, and I want to thank Diane. Congratulations. And SBA's not telling me anything I didn't know. Thank you.
Thank you. I think both, I thank everyone for coming in today. I thank everyone for their presentations. And I also thank both my commissioners for their, their work upon this endeavor. Quite frankly, sometimes you're tasked with things that are very difficult to address. I do have a teleconference this evening of the Montague County Planning Commission, and I think next Tuesday, we have another meeting on the Kitchen Committee at Montague County 4H and Extension Center. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second. We are adjourned. Thank you.